Welcome to Park County's own Hurricane Hill Botanicals. Where it's been said you'll find the best handcrafted soap on the planet. In addition to that, we've got a great selection of essential oils, body care products, even CBD products. Can't miss out on our big selection of herbal teas, smudge sticks, even incense. Check our website for hours.
Welcome, everybody that's here. Large turnout. It's a, hopefully it's not for me to be back.
Yes.
Everyone, please join with me in reciting Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you got, you got a couple of second minutes in front. I could be taking a little bit of time and idea in those. Wants in the regular meeting, wants in a special meeting?
Um, I don't know. Jason, did you have any trouble digging today?
Nah.
No? You did last week. Last week was hard, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was pretty, uh, a lot of solid work for sure.
Yeah. We did one last week, too. Because they always come in threes.
So it seems.
I just, I'm out of respect for everybody else, so cautious.
You don't know what day next month is, is March eighth.
It is. Yes, it is. We still can't figure out what the type of the bridge are. We still can't figure out what the type of the bridge is.
It's a walkway.
A walk bridge, yeah.
It's not a water line, too, is it? Where, where are the water, where's the fire hydrant?
That's the water line right there, which Jason, I looked at. The survey guy also is figuring out where it is.
Well, I can't see it. I've got cataract soot in my eye, can't see it.
So, that's May.
Yeah.
So, going up here, tall on this side, right, that pedestrian road. See, he called them located, and then after located, and then we're trying to locate. But our stuff should be on the other side.
Yeah, but I wonder where it crosses back over to get the hydrant.
I don't, I don't know, because Jason's talking about that.
Hydrant don't show us.
Well, I don't know.
Unless this is it here.
Yeah. So, this would be at Shop Myers, this would be like their big, their big pit right there, and then there's a hydrant there, so it looks like it crosses, because that's right by Judy's house. Know what I mean?
Oh, it is a hydrant there, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I see how it goes.
But then even the, even the waste water on that side, too. It's going that way. So, I don't know, it's a mystery.
I'm a mysterious extra five.
You ready for the regular meeting minutes approval?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of January eleventh, two, twenty twenty-two.
I will second that.
They're moving the segments to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of January eleventh, so. Any question? Home favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carried. Now we have a special meeting on January thirty-first. pertaining to, uh, Stormwater Project.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from January thirty-first.
I'll second it.
It's being moved in second to approve the, uh, minutes from the special meeting of January thirty-first. Is there anything under question? Home favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carried.
Yeah, you can sign it if you want. Or you can have a glance on it if you want, if you want here.
Is this in here for any reason?
Uh, we just need to, we just need to sign it tonight. Everybody needs to sign it. So.
Okay. Minutes being completed, we go around the room for public input. Man, Nikki. I'll go to the back row back there. Mark.
Yes.
You're up.
Thank you.
You know, I was coaching Little Aiden when he was playing.
Yeah, I did. Okay, and I apologize, they aren't the best, but I did want to get some of these a little closer, uh, so you guys could see while I'm talking about this. And my name is Mark Davis. Former, I only got four copies, too, I'm sorry, we have to share a little bit here. And I don't know where to do this, because I've got a big one that way I could draw on and show. I don't know if the others want to see, or the best place to stand, that you guys can still see as well. It's important for you guys, obviously, to
Right.
see what I'm talking about.
Wherever you think, Mark.
Okay, how about right? Okay, uh, and I can, I can swivel. So, as I said, my name is Mark Davis, uh, former president of the Park Trails Alliance, which was formerly the Cover Bridge Gateway Trails Association. Uh, right now, we have a six tenths of a mile trail in Rosedale that was completed in two thousand and fifteen. And, um, we've, uh, we had the town support ever since we started that project and, uh, appreciate that. Uh, two years ago, we applied for the Next Level Trails Grant in the state of Indiana. And, uh, you guys, uh, the town board provided a letter, which we included in our application, uh, supporting our efforts to get it. And, um, I believe, I've been back since we got the award, but we did. In March of last year, we were awarded, uh, Next Level Trails Grant, uh, for a total of five million dollars for our project. And we're the only applicant out of the first two rounds that, um, I think that requested. I know that we were the only one that was awarded the full amount, which was five million dollars. That was the maximum amount that you could get. Uh, so our project, uh, on the sheet in front of it, is the Park Community Rail Trail. And it will be going from the county line, south of Rosedale here, up to the depot in Rockville. Uh, the bulk of it will be on the former, former Pennsylvania Railroad right-of-way, of which we currently own about seventy-five percent now. We recently acquired about another mile of right-of-way. And we're in the final stages and, uh, on acquiring probably about another mile, uh, that we did not own previously. So, um, it's not going to be continuous on all of it. Uh, some landowners aren't willing to work, and that's fine, that's their prerogative. And we're figuring out ways to work, get around them, uh, and, uh, but we'll have, hopefully not more than about a mile, uh, mile and a half on the road. We'll be utilizing the county road in some sections where we can't stay on the right-of-way. Uh, but we do hope to have pretty, trail most of the way. Uh, some of the trail will be off of the right-of-way, either alongside or, or some other property that we're able to acquire to make the trail happen. The trail includes, or the project is about six and a half million dollars total. All right, we're going to have eight bridges, yeah, on the trail. Um, it's a pretty extensive project. Uh, we have four years to complete the project, so our hope, our goal is obviously to have it done, uh, in two thousand and twenty-five. One of the bridges happens to be the bridge on North Main Street in Rosedale. We've got, uh, agreement from the county, uh, where we're helping, because we want a pedestrian bridge across the, the branch there alongside, not on the ru, on the roadway. So, we're, uh, covering, uh, the part, a portion of the cost for the design, as well as the construction of the new bridge. And, um, actually, we will be out, I'll be out tomorrow, and then next week, they'll be do, doing soil borings on the north and south side of the bridge, uh, because we're starting, we'll be starting the design work of that pretty soon. Uh, now that is a county bridge, okay, and we have the agreement with the county. I already spoken with, um, uh, highway superintendent, and basically, we're working with them, so they'll be involved. As we get the designs together, they'll have full approval and all that, and, and working with them.
Do they have, yeah, near future plans to widen that bridge on the, on Main Street?
As far as I know, they didn't, I was told that the bridge has been on their list for a while.
Well, that's what I understood, too.
Right, right, but the bridge will be widened in addition to a pedestrian lane on the side. So it will go, I don't know how wide it is now, if it's a twenty-foot bridge, it's going to, what, twenty-five or twenty-eight or whatever? But it will be full-width bridge on the roadway, and then an additional pedestrian bridge.
Okay.
Which side, east or west, is something that I'll be looking to you guys for some input and, and help on that. Okay?
Okay.
Also, getting through town, um, we have, um, one gap in town where we're not going to be able to stay on the right-of-way at this particular time, so we are going to need to come off of the trail. Now, some of you will, will recall, it's probably, actually, I was looking for the report, and I couldn't find it, because I couldn't remember what year it was. The years just seem to fly, fly by now. But Rose Holman did a project, the Rose Holman students have made a presentation to the board, um, on some alternatives for getting through town. And one of those was, um, coming up, utilizing this street, and then up along Main Street. Um, we could either u, utilize the right-of-way on either side of the road to, uh, and maybe like replace the sidewalk and widen it to a trail, uh, a trail width through town. Uh, we can, uh, share the road, and we'll need to do signage. We also talked about potentially, uh, connecting our trail across to the town park. There's a alleyway, and I don't know if you own it, or there's a, there's a ca, town right-of-way, I think.
There is a, there is an alleyway between the two, and then the part of it would come out of our, off of our land, too, yes. I think that was about two thousand and seventeen that you and I went to Rose, Mark.
Okay, is that what it was?
Yeah, I think that's when we went, and they came before the council, because I think it's before I moved in as a quick treasurer, so, yeah.
Okay, so anyways, um, what I will be asking for tonight is, um, as far as how, how Rosedale's impacted, um, we're getting very close to the, where we're going to start, um, doing some of the design work for the trail. Um, we, we were awarded the grant last March, we didn't get our first draw of the money until August. And then we started, um, identifying and negotiating with engineering firms. We're currently working with four different engineering firms. Myers Engineering is now aligned, uh, who, um, Dave Myers was a Rockville high school graduate and a Rose Holman graduate. Trying to keep as much local as we can with the, these, with the, with the project. And then we have VS Engineering, which is the county engineering firm doing all the bridges in the county. They'll be working with us on the bridge designs. Patriot Engineering is doing the environmental and permitting workforce, uh, on the whole project. And then Land Steward Design Group, which is Luke Walts from Rockville, is a landscape design firm, is doing that for us as far as signage, amenities, and, and, uh, the whole theme throughout the, throughout the trail. So, four different design groups that we're working with. My thought, or my hope was that, um, the board could assign a person potentially to work or to answer questions, kind of be a point person as we start working through the design and questions and issues. And then, and maybe, uh, offer up ideas for options that then we could bring back to the board for approval. Obviously, it's your jurisdiction, anything that we would be doing through town, um, that, well, on our property or not, but especially if it's not on our property, which we are going to have, uh, places where we don't own, uh, we would need your approval, uh, for any, any work done there. Now, the project, obviously, is expensive, but one thing, we are a small nonprofit group, but no money, no dollars at all on this is from any tax dollars from the residents of Park County. And that's something that we always bring up, because it's a concern with everyone. Uh, there are none, the state had money, actually, it was from the toll roads, something that doesn't have anything to do with us in Park County. The money was available and had set aside ninety million dollars for trails in Indiana. That's what it was going to be spent on, that was the bucket, and why not get as much as we can and bring it here to Park County? Trails, like what we have here, is another amenity that just fits right in with our tourism, which is, uh, number two industry in the county. Bring, people come here to enjoy the outdoors, this is one more amenity. With the lake, the state parks, uh, kayaking, the bridges. Bring, people come out here to see what we have, because it's beautiful. And this is just another way for them to come out and enjoy it, and spend their dollars on gasoline, and staying overnight in restaurants and whatnot here in Park County. So, um, yeah, it's, um, like I say, you have the, the copy of the map to see what we're doing there. We're restoring a couple, we're maintain, or refurbishing a couple of the old timber trestle bridges that were the original railroad bridges.
Up there between Jessup and Rockville?
Uh, there's one, yeah, ju, north of Jessup, and then there's one just out the, uh, or just south of Jessup, and there's one north of Catlin.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're also, uh, the plans that we've got approval, uh, to relocate, restore and relocate, uh, Whipple Trestle, an iron bridge from another part of the county, and we're going to incorporate that and put that over Little Raccoon just north of Jessup. So, that'd be a single span, uh, and one of the old iron bridges that have been bypassed, we'll be moving that there. So, and then we have some new pedestrian bridges as well that we'll be putting in.
Sounds great.
So, so, yeah, it, um, we just, uh, we were able to start, and we've been working on surveying. Uh, we're starting to work on some of the, some of the design work now, that's why we're doing the soil borings. And in getting that stuff, Natalie brought up that, uh, there up here on the door side town, so you've seen some surveyors up there. So, over the next few months, we'll be needing some input or a contact anyway. So as I work with the engineers, I can keep you, you guys abreast and, uh, get your thoughts and input. Okay, that's pretty much it. Questions?
I think it's a great thing. I just wish that people that are a little abstinent about letting a little bit of their property go for the betterment of their everybody, uh, would be more helpful. I mean, this little part over here don't mean nothing to nobody, except who owns it. And it would be of great benefit to you all and to the trail.
Yeah.
And I'm sure by looking at this, there's a few other places up there that I don't know why people think a trail is a bad thing and it's going to bring bad people in. I've seen so many comments about, oh, you're just going to bring people in here so they can trish up the county. People that go on these trails don't trish up the county.
No, I, the, the original trail runs right behind my house, as everybody knows, and, um, we were obviously trail supporters, we've always been trail supporters, and it's a great place to go out, look out, and see families walking together, riding bikes together. There is very little litter along the trail. Every now and again, you'll find a piece, but it's really very minimal. It, it is so positive.
I just know that over in eastern Indiana, the trails are amazing. The number of trails they got over there.
Yes.
On, I think it's the Monon Railroad.
Yep.
Uh, wow. What a trail system that is.
And, and there is more effort. We're working with a regional group, which includes Riverside and Terre Haute, which just, uh, was involved in the trail that goes across and hooks up to the Wabashiki, uh, across the grade there, West Terre Haute. Uh, Vermillion Trails Alliance just finished their trail from the Monozuma, uh, west side of the Monozuma Bridge, and it goes about a mile.
Yep.
Gets over to the county road.
To Hillsdale.
Yep, and so, uh, there's a lot of effort around, even in the region, to bring that to, to this, uh, area. And I'll agree, we maintain the trail, obviously, in, in town, or have it. In the beginning, there was more trash, but honestly, it's very, anytime we have someone assigned, basically, when the weather's nice, to come down once a week, somebody comes down and puts eyes on the trail. And, uh, there's just a lot of times, there's just, there's nothing, I mean.
No, there, there genuinely isn't. I mean, we, we use it a lot in the summer, I run a lot, and we, and I think there are a couple ladies that pick up some trash.
That's what I was getting ready to say, there are people that pick it up as they walk the trail.
Yes.
That, that is true. And we've, uh, have cleared now, and we've got the trail around Shop Myers, and it's cleared all the way out to the creek. And a lot of people walk that. Uh, it's not officially open, but, uh, uh, because there's some rough spots in it, obviously, and we have a lot of work to do, and have some trees, a little more clearing to do. But, uh, uh, yeah, it does get used a lot, and I've had a lot of conversations with people while I'm out there mowing or cutting weeds or whatever, and, um, it's, uh, it's very well received. We have, we, we do get a lot of support, and your, your comments about landowners, I will say, we've had a lot more landowners willing to talk to us and work with us than not, all along the way.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah.
I understand that. Well, thank you, Mark, for that presentation. Anybody have any questions for Mark?
Does someone on the council want to volunteer to be Mark's liaison?
Well, the thing about, about it is, there's at least three of us that are around almost all the time. And, uh, personally, I don't want to do it anymore.
Right.
I'm about to the point where I'm, uh, done with this position for more reasons than one. But, uh, anybody want to step up and do that? You're more than welcome to help Mark out.
I mean, I'm, I'll gladly take none, I mean.
All right, thank you, Cody.
Kind of falls in with parks and wrecking, so.
Cody's the park guy, yeah.
Good, good.
This is, uh, Cody Mason.
Cody, nice to meet you, Cody. That was the new face.
Yeah. Um, I'll get your contact info swapped around.
Yeah, that'd be good, just so we can, and
Yeah.
and it'd be intermittent or whatever, but just, you know, when things come up or questions, then I've got somebody.
And we can always converse with each other about it, too, so.
Right, and some, some questions will take that as well.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, I wouldn't be expecting an answer right away, it's just things are going to come up, and, and I, you guys need to be involved. And, you know, it's not something that I can make a decision on, so. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Now I've lost my minutes.
Could you give them to me?
I think so, yeah.
I think he might have. I don't know, probably signed ones, here's the not signed ones, do you want to use those?
When do you need to decide about the, um, either going by the park or?
It will probably be, I'm guessing in the next two to three months, but sometime, it could be sooner or later. We're, we're still finishing up what we call the control survey, which laying out all along the way. Uh, now they're kind of focused on finishing up some of the boundary surveys and getting the bridge information together, so the bridge engineers can start. They just started the actual civil design, which is the trail, uh, probably sh, within the last month. So, and we figure it's going to take, uh, what was it, three to six months to get that done. So I'm thinking in the next couple of months, we're going to have some questions come up. Our goal is to get the design down this spring, early summer, and get some bids and get, and start it on work.
If you go through the park, are you going to come, uh, down Main Street then?
That's the kind of questions, do we come down Main Street? Do we take, get on the side and take some of the right-of-way? Or is that, do we do just a spur over to the park, but then continue on? Because we do have, uh, agreements to at least get up to this street, okay? Where we can keep the trail, come on up, on up to this street, and then maybe cut over and pick up, and then do, like I say, because you have pretty wide right-of-way on both sides of the street, um, which hopefully we could utilize that, replace the sidewalk with a trail. Um, which side would be better, which side would we cross? Would we put the pedestrian bridge on the road, roadway bridge when it's replaced? Uh, there's a small walk, sidewalk type bridge now, but there's not a lot of room on that side of the, uh, bridge or, or, uh, now, where we, and we own everything on the east side. So we, you know, basically from, from the bridge, quite ways, uh, on the east side already.
That's still the old railroad right-of-way.
Yes.
Okay, I remember when trains ran on that, Mark. Becky? You remember that?
We, we're.
They went real close to her house where she grew up in.
Yeah, they went, um, the B and O went up behind our house.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we, we, we have the place marked, um, on the trail just after it gets in the woods. We, we set a special survey point and hope to put a, like a railroad crossing sign and historical information, because of the B and O and the
Where they crossed.
Pennsylvania Cross right there, and there's a little foundation of the old switch house is still there.
Really?
Yeah. So, we hope to utilize some of that.
My dad helped load grain cars for there at the elevator on the railroad.
I used to walk those tracks a lot when I was a kid. Okay, thank you. Let's move now to old business. Got anything hanging here under old business? We've got to sign the salary ordinance. I'll pass that down there. The dump truck repair's been done?
No.
Not yet?
I'm still waiting for him to free up.
Do what?
I'm waiting for him to have free time.
Okay.
Right arm's been pretty behind.
How's your, uh, moving?
Well, haven't moved. Um, every time, every time I get ready to move, like, Jason's house went through some COVID, and then we've had some burials lately, and then we had, obviously, we had our snowstorm.
So you're going to take that corner up there?
I am going to take this corner. Um, Andrea and I have, I hired a deputy clerk, Andrea Uthman. She's working a couple days a week, so she and I checked it all out, we've got it all figured out. And then we've got a grand plan. We just, we need some labor, and so we, I have to call AT&T a day ahead to turn the internet line on, because I have to move all that in one day. Because I can't, they can't leave that active for the router until I move the actual router.
Sure.
So, yeah.
They'd be getting cheated out of something, probably, wouldn't they?
Yeah, so hopefully soon, Jason's got a, he's got a funeral tomorrow, and then he and I'll try to coordinate as long as we don't have to bury anyone else for a little while.
Okay.
Get closer.
Did we get the contract the fire department signed last month?
Uh, yes, we have a contract. Um, I have this copy for the fire department, everybody's signed it. How many members were I expect, was I expecting Kevin?
They have five board members.
One, two, three, four, I have four on here, so.
That's close enough, that's a majority.
Um, I do want to say this about the fire department contract, is the language is a little... So the town pays a lot of insurance on the fire department, and the language in here is not very specific. And, like, we pay some insurance, and Karen Russ pays some insurance, and they pay some insurance. I think we probably need to come to the table and clarify what everyone's paying. Because according to the contact, I'll just read it, it is understood in a degree that the second party agrees to furnish fire protection to the citizens of Rosedale, for which the first party, the town of Rosedale, agrees to pay all insurance on the fire equipment and all insurance on the volunteer firemen, not to exceed thirty members. So, we pay for a accident and sickness policy on the members, but then there's some other general policies that we're paying, and then they're paying some equipment, we're paying some equipment. It's all very confusing, so I think everybody probably
Spelled out what's what.
Could agree that we need to come to the table and really set that out, because it is really confusing. So, we can, we can approach that throughout the year, so. because it is really confusing. So, we can, we can approach that throughout the year, so. But everybody's, it's all been paid now, but the interns office had one formula, the fire department and I didn't know how they came up with that formula and it's, it's kind of, it's kind of a mess, so. This is yours, Kevin.
Did uh, anybody attend the Park County?
Um, the meeting?
Meeting that was held here?
The housing meeting was actually, in person was actually canceled at the last minute cause COVID numbers were kinda spiking. They did a virtual meeting.
Oh, okay.
I did attend the virtual meeting. Um, basically what they're trying to find out is, they're trying to call on some local officials and people that own property and things like that to see what kind of housing needs and what we're hearing on what, what are people are looking for when they come to Park County to live? Are they looking for two bedroom, one bath, one thousand square foot homes? Or are they looking for larger three bedroom, two bath homes with a couple acres? You know what I mean? They're trying to kinda pinpoint that. Do they want apartments? Do they want, you know, so that's kinda what they're trying to do. They're trying to see what inventory is available and things like that. It was interesting. The survey results should be out, probably I think in March.
Okay. Any other old business anybody wants to bring up? I'm a little bit disavantied since I haven't been here since October. I think I missed November, December, and January, right?
As far as the storm art project, we're just waiting to see when we.
Get funded.
Yeah, we are. Chrissy Gerald has already hit the ground running and after meeting her, I'm sure you guys can imagine. Um, she and I have, we've reactivated the town sam.gov account, which she did most of that. I don't really understand what we were doing. We just did it together. Um, she's got letters to go out. She's given me a list of things to do in the office to gather for, which now that I have some help in there, Andrea and I'll start, well, we already started pulling some files and stuff like that. Um, she'll start that environmental survey and that kinda stuff, so it's, it's in progress. I sent Scott Craig an email about some of that yesterday and he left me a voicemail late this afternoon that he's just been really busy, so he'll call me tomorrow and we'll spec out a few more things on his own.
Okay. Any other old business? If not, we'll move to new. What do you have under new business? That and quick treasure.
Well, Mark is here. That was new business.
We had Mark. That did a good job.
We had Mark. Um, okay, we have agreed to use some, I'm gonna call this new business. We've agreed to use some ARP money for new water meter reading software, but we talked about not purchasing the computer from Midwest because it was really high. So I contacted OC Rugged, cause that's who Kevin got his tough book from. The guy was super fast and he came back with, I sent him the specs on the meter software quote and he actually upgraded to a different tough book that he said was better and, um, it went, the quote from Midwest was three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and his tough book is one thousand fifty dollars. So.
He still makes money off of that?
He said free shipping and no tax, so.
Probably the big difference is OC Rugged's are all remans. They're not brand new. They probably, the others was probably quoting a brand new.
He was.
That's why I went that way, but mine still came with a two-year warranty from them guys.
Well, and he said that, like, we, we literally use that tough book once a month.
Right.
That's all we use it for, is we pull it out, Jase takes it and he brings it back. That's it.
Yep.
So we don't need a thirty-five hundred dollar computer for that.
Right.
So, so if you guys are good with that, I can set that stuff in motion.
I'll make a motion that we give you at least eleven hundred dollars towards a water meter computer from OC Rugged.
Purchase computer?
Tough book.
It's a computer.
To go with the reading software.
Meter reading.
They just got a case around it.
One thousand and fifty dollars.
Uh, there's motion made by Carol Brown, seconded by John McGlynn to purchase the uh, computer for the meter reading for the amount of one thousand fifty dollars. Anything under question? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried. Next.
That's all I have.
That's all you have?
That's all I have. Your fund report is not a reckoned out report. I do not have any bank statements yet. That is where we're at. There's no appropriation report because the budget is not loaded into Keystone, since I'm still in last year's working on the annual financial report.
You know, any business, move the department reports? Uh, department reports, the water had eighty-four penalties generated. We had no tags hung and no shut offs.
Nope.
Okay. Anything else under the water? Are we, are we doing the phosphate thing?
We are.
All up and going and everything?
Yep.
All right.
Have you had some discolored water?
I don't think I have, but I've seen people say that they've had some, but it cleared up right away.
Yeah, I had a couple people call me in the last week and mentioned they've had a little bit of discolored water. Did you have some for?
I thought I was crazy, but now that you've said that, I was like, oh, but I just thought I was crazy.
Was this for a short period of time?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, it's just been kind of a fluke thing. I had, and then nobody was like close to one another. You know what I mean? Like, it was just kinda spotty and I hadn't called Garyian about it or anything, so.
It was probably like mid last week, I was just like, but then I ran it some more and I was like, oh, I just must be crazy.
We've had, um, Jase, what do we have? We, how many times did the water tower freeze?
Twice, I believe. Uh, line busted and that caused one freeze and then the heat lamp went out in the meter pit or the pit up there. Um, that caused the pit freeze the second time.
They need a better situation up there on that thing.
Well, the, the heat lamp that's in there, it could be shorting itself out, so I did purchase a new one. Now I'm just waiting for it to blow another bolt and then I'll put a whole new setup in there and hopefully.
Yeah, I just wonder if there's not uh, some kind of a heat strip that doesn't put off light? Just makes heat, that uh, you could insulate it from the box and just makes heat like, uh,
They have a heat wrap on, on lines up there now.
Like he, heat tape?
It's like a tape or a wrap. You just boil it around and plug it in.
Well, that would be better than a heat lamp, I think.
Well, the biggest issue with that is that that pit doesn't accumulate some water. Um,
Yes.
I've never dealt with this stuff, so I don't know enough, not to say if it's waterproof or not.
Well, some heat tapes are. As long as you keep both ends out of the water. Well, actually, some of the heat tapes, you can insulate the, the one end of it off, plug it off too with uh, using some kind of epoxy glue and uh, then you don't even need to have the power end of it. Yeah. Yeah, investigate that a little bit, cause winter's not over. And every year, we have that problem.
It is every year thing.
It's an annual affair.
Exactly that, yes.
Many times more than once, so, okay.
Um, I will say this, both the generators were serviced, wastewater and water. Doug, Doug, is it Floyd? Doug Floyd? He did come and do that. You were out, weren't you?
I was COVID, yeah.
He was out sick, um, but Doug came in and he did both generators. Um, he said the water generator could use a new battery. It is eight years old. If we wanted to replace that, he will. He hasn't yet. He said it's working and it's testing fine. Um,
Yeah, but all of a sudden it quit.
Right, so we can't have him do that. I was, I met him too. He is a super nice guy. He charged us two hundred and thirteen dollars for one of the generators and two hundred and fifteen dollars for the other one. And he said he would see us in six months unless we needed something prior to that. So if we want him to replace that one battery, we can call him.
Well, I know my car, not too long ago, just all of a sudden quit. Uh, what the hell's the matter of that? I looked at the battery, it's original equipment from twenty fourteen. So it lasted a long time, but uh,
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
All right, maybe uh, we'll do that.
Okay. I'll have Jase give him a call.
Yeah. Is there any issues at the wastewater plant? Anybody knows of?
I believe everything out there is running smooth.
Mm-hmm, yep, Rob hasn't said anything.
Do you see Rob occasionally?
I do.
Was he the one that was requesting the millings for the road?
Yes.
Well, that road last time I was on, it was kinda
Uh, we graded it.
Kinda bad.
We went over the top a couple times, up towards the front where you pull in, there's a little strip where water sits right there in the edge. There's a couple of them, but overall it, it's not bad.
Okay. All right. I'm glad to hear there's no wastewater issues, okay.
Are we gonna have them come and check our, you know, like they did in the subdivision? Had to blow it out and, when are we gonna, I'm gonna come back and kinda eyeball them all.
When Barrett was here, when that Brad Barrett came to clear the subdivision, he told Jase that he does have a camera. If we want a camera, all that. I don't, you know more about that than I do.
He believes the biggest issue with what's going on in the subdivision is your sewage line runs right down the middle of the street. Well, you have, you know, a dozen big maple trees and it's all clay tile. He said he does believe it's full of roots. Um, but he'd like to put a camera through.
Well, we know it's full of roots, cause we've had both sides now, uh, jet it out. But it probably wouldn't hurt to get a visual.
Three, four spots, um, between the corner by your house and all the way up by the dentist's office. Cause he jetted all of that.
Yeah, like I say, on both sides, we've had issues in the past. Not so much going across down on the end, but uh, the north and south lines, yeah. Yeah, be good, good to do that.
Let's get a price from him.
Street department, you did a hell of a job on the streets.
I spent some time on it.
Do you, when you go south out of town, do you go down to the Legion and turn around and come back?
Uh, most time, when I noticed that the road past the Legion was getting nasty, cause county didn't come through very often. I had to open that back up.
Yeah, I noticed it didn't come through very often, but I'm, I'm able to sit at my window and watch peek, you know, go up and down. I did see Jase go by several times.
He was out, he was out a long time, sixteen hours in the truck?
You didn't wear that blade out yet, did you?
No. A lot of life left.
All right.
Uh, the only other thing.
New blade last year.
It wasn't last year. He got new cutting edges for it last year.
Oh, new cutting in.
The attachment for the John Deere that is sitting out at the cemetery under the three side building. Um, if you made a decision on it, you can liquidate that.
Liquidate the tobacco part?
Tobacco attachment, yes.
I don't think we ever did talk about that, did we?
Well, Jase brought it up, that we don't, with the excavator, we don't use it, we're, you know what I mean? He said maybe we could sell it and there's maybe something else we could buy, a different attachment or something. It has some value. I don't know. Have we figured out what it's worth?
I found one similar on, I just looked on Facebook Marketplace and they were selling for thirty-five hundred. Whether they got that, I couldn't tell you. That's ballpark.
Well, that's a good asking point anyhow.
As soon as we sell it, we'll need one.
If you got an excavator, we got different sized buckets on the excavator.
Yeah, we got two.
And we can get about anywhere with that excavator.
Well, then.
That little, that little John Deere's not got a whole bunch of power as far as being able to oomph stuff. So, now, we, I guess we could make a motion to put it up for sale. Somebody wanna do that? I'll make the motion. For a second? You said that?
Carol.
Carol? Then maybe say that to put the excavator attachment for the John Deere up for sale, right?
I have to figure out how to sell it, so.
Yeah.
I'll figure that out.
So moving second to put the excavator attachment for the John Deere at the cemetery up for sale. We'll figure out how to do it later. All in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign? Anything else under street? How's your sand supply?
It's looking. I've used probably two thirds of it, what I had.
We need to get a hold of the county and see if they can bring some more.
Uh, he's, I would say by now they, they have the free time to bring it. Um, he did say if we was in a pinch, um, I could go out there with a dump trailer and they'd load it.
Yeah, they might have started slowing down a little bit.
I would say so.
Yeah. Who you talk to about that?
Uh, Randy, if I can.
Randy?
Any other time that's, is secretary.
Okay. All right, thank you. Park department?
Nothing new right now.
What?
Nothing really new.
Nothing new there?
Yeah.
Ain't no kids been over there having snowball fights or anything, you know?
No snowmen.
No snowmen?
I don't think this is a really good snowman packing snow.
I see a couple in town right now.
I don't know, I'm saying. Todd's posting some pictures.
My girls have not been out and tried to make snowmen, so.
Why not Natalie?
They did go sledding.
Okay.
All right, fire department?
They had a total of eight runs. One was a wreck, five med runs and two mutual aids for fire.
Okay.
And breakfast situation?
Far as being in Oregon going for it, on the twentieth. We did not, uh, we're not canceled as of right now. Be a full eat in breakfast.
All right. Cemetery report?
Just one burial, one spot.
No graves sold or anything?
No.
Okay, police department report?
Uh, we got Mike's training started from CADA, so he got that. Um, I started some of that Wednesday or Thursday. Uh, I was able to secure funds for a body camera from the prosecutor. They've already, I already ordered it and actually came in yesterday.
For him?
For Mike, yep. So we all three have the same type body cameras to use. Um, still looking for taser funds, but that's a little bit more difficult. Office cleaning's going pretty good. At some point, Natalie and I get together, I've got about four. Office cleaning's going pretty good. At some point Natalie and I get together, I've got about four or five boxes of stuff that needs ground up. And then we had, um, I had. One misdemeanor and two felony arrests last month, so.
Okay. Do we have any properties we need to talk about? As long as you got, make sure that you had the two of them cleaned up.
What, the two houses that were torn down? Lidle's, yeah, his his is looking better. He's got a little more to do. Justin's got some more graded work to do on the Baldur's Street House. Just getting it down and.
A big pile of concrete.
Yeah, he's pretty close too. I need to transfer the deed over to him now that he's done. As long as you guys are signed, I I guess I needed to make sure you guys are satisfied with the demo.
Well, I don't want him leaving that concrete there.
Right, so if you want me to wait, I can.
Tell him that as soon as he gets rid of the concrete, he can have the deed.
Yeah, I can do that. Um, yeah, I think they both, that's. Huge improvement for both those areas of town. As far as the rest of the properties go, um. I think Jace takes notes when he's out on whose house he's cleaned up. Kevin's been talking about cars and things like that. We're just waiting for some better weather, obviously.
The uh. I've seen some talk about. The old hotel saloon, whatever heck it is. Any movement going on on that?
Uh, as far as I know, it's been purchased and they're like renovating it to do ghost tours.
I think they, I think the same people still own it. I think that. I think that the s- the one son is stepping up to the plate maybe to do that.
Tony?
No, the other one.
Oh, Mark?
Yes, I believe it's Mark.
I know the promotion stuff on it is the same company or. Team that's doing the tours of the Rockville Sanatorium.
So I don't really know.
Okay, well, just curious, uh. Something needs to be done.
I haven't seen anything. I haven't seen any transfers on it. I haven't talked to anybody from over there. Um, Kevin, I, Hannah Comar did come over today. She did wonder if. That truck is kind of making it hard to see as you come around there, especially with the snow. I know it's got good plates on it and everything.
I see him, I can ask him if they would. What I was asking Jace about is that tree there. I guess it's on our side, maybe later on to think about getting that tree down.
The big one?
Yeah, because it actually kind of pushes, people want to park there on that parallel parking. It kind of pushes everybody. Out to the street because they don't want to park on this side of or that side of it. Just a thought for later on when the weather gets better, but. I looked at that truck and I figured somebody just parked it there, but it's got.
She came over today and asked about it.
Nobody knows whose it is?
I can find out, but I don't know who it is right now, but I can find out.
I saw that sitting there, I wonder what that is. Somebody having lunch or?
Yeah, we think that it's related to that. Yeah, we think it's related to that. But they could put it around back, maybe.
Easily could be put around the back, yes.
Correct.
Speaking of trees, it's a bush, but the.
I know which bush you're talking about.
I can never see, I I have to pull out into the, I'm like, because their van is parked there, so. You have to see, like, you have.
Going to be accidentally taken care of?
I don't know.
I I accidentally took care of the one by your house.
And I appreciate that very much. Uh, maybe this one can get accidentally taken care of, even though.
I think this guy's a little more stubborn and mier.
Yeah, uh, you know what? I'll contact to him. He's, yeah, he's.
I don't know what good it's doing.
Originally, it was just a small bush. Now it's just gotten to the point where.
It really is a hindrance and every time I pull up there, I think about it and I keep meaning to say something. It is for sure, so I'll, I'll give him a call.
Pull up that way anymore. Come around this way.
He was just in here the other day. I wish I.
Okay. I guess we're ready for the court treasurer's report.
Um, well, I think I did most of my stuff in the regular meeting. I'm working on the annual financial report. Um, I did hire Andrea Ushman. She's been working a couple days a week. She's training on the water. It's gonna work out nicely to transition over to the new water meter software with a deputy clerk. So we can all learn that together. Um. And I do have a grand, I actually have a grand plan than I had before down here, so let's have to see how it pans out. Um, other than that, uh, I agree. I also commend Jace for working through the storm and. Working, you know, not having much snow removal experience, just getting out there and doing a good job and just nice to be. Everybody, everybody's on the same page. Everybody's working together.
Where are you gonna have people come in the building?
This front door.
The front door? So I won't have to climb a ramp or?
Right, well, I'll have to go down the cruddy ramp. We have this nice sidewalk out here now. You can just pull up out there and run in and pay your bill. Um, I think it'll be nicer. I've had to.
We got the drop box over here.
Which is fine. It's fine that it's still back there, but I've had to have some people. Uh, I'll take Larry Jenkins for instance. He has a walker now. I don't, he has to call me and I have to go out and get his bill from him. And then go run back in and out with change because he gets hung up with his walker on the ramp. So it it is kind of a hindrance. It's. It's, yeah, I think this will be a lot nicer.
So we need some signage out there. Town hall. Business office entrance. We're looking to that for.
New signs.
Our neighbors over here.
Take a look at that front door, so it's easier for them to open.
Yeah, I can have Jace look at it.
It does seem to be. Anything else?
Um, I don't think so.
How about do public comments again? Nick, you got anything? Mark, you got anything more you want to say? Kevin, Jace? Mister photographer? Okay, chair would accept the motion to pay the bills as presented, which I never did see. Probably didn't quite get to me. That's okay.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills as presented.
Been moved and seconded to approve the bills as presented. Anything under question? All those in favor of the motion just registered by saying aye? Motion carried. Next, we need a motion to adjourn to our next meeting, which will be on the eighth of March. For a second? Is that CB? Now, moving to say to adjourn our meeting until the next meeting, which is March eighth, March eighth, unless we have a special meeting. Anything under question? All in favor, say aye, aye? Motion carried.